All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's the Halifax Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, April 26th. It's 4:04. The meeting is being taped by Area 58. We start off with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any additions to the agenda?
No additions, but I think we should go out of order.
What would you like to do first?
I think we should do the warrants at the end, so we're not stopping midway through our warrants.
You can do it at the end. All right, would that change? Is that a motion?
I move it.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, discussions. The town adminis-
We didn't do the warrants.
I thought you just said you wanted to do them at the end.
No, I meant the review of our town warrant.
Oh, the town meeting warrant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I thought you meant-
No. That doesn't matter at the end. I just don't wanna get halfway through the articles and have to stop.
Okay. Make your motions.
You wanted to make another motion, because you didn't understand it?
I thought the same thing.
Okay, so I make a motion to take the agenda out of order and move the review of the town meeting warrant to the end.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and we have, um, I have to-
Yeah, invoke the rule.
Invoke the rule of necessity. Do I have to motion that, or I'm just invoking it?
You just invoke it.
Okay. So I move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 95 for $391,251.01. Withholding warrant number 96 for $133,815.68. And vendor warrant number 97 for $111,716.78.
Okay. Any of those legal bills that we couldn't sign the last time?
No, I just pulled them.
From the total?
Warrants. No, no, that's in this.
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And then I moved to approve payment of following selectmen bills. Illegal ad for express newspaper-
Okay.
For tonight's thing. $45. And then National Grid for $1,197.72. And I pulled that, because you can't-
Okay. I'll second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, town administrators' report.
A couple items, Mr. Chairman. Number one, you have an agenda about the electric vehicle charging station. And I'd been requested, you know, from the state for an extension. And I think that there may have been some concerns about whether or not it would be feasible to have the charging stations here in front of Town Hall.
Okay.
So there was some concerns about the location of it and things like that. So I wanted to bring it to the board's attention before, you know, I took any action to say yes to another ten extension.
I think if this question's over where it should go and what, whether or not the parking lot's gonna be dug up, repaved, put in the light posts that we had talked about previously.
Right.
I think we should hold off on approving that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Is that fine?
Yeah, fine.
You folks have the Advanced Life Support Agreement to be signed. I probably need to vote to approve that again.
You want to move it?
I move it.
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Is it just the chair, or both?
No, both of them.
Okay. Is there two of them?
Yep.
You want us to sign?
What is that?
Agreement.
Agreement.
And the third item is, I received an email at 5:45 last night from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development regarding the MBTA Community Information Form.
Okay.
That's due next Monday. And so first I've heard of it. I mean, not that I'd heard about the legislation at all. So anyway, the form asks for basic information about municipal plans to comply with the legislation and all that. And you've got copies of what I downloaded today regarding the program. And so, you know, with the board's permission, I'll just go ahead and fill out the form to submit to the state, you know, saying that we are gonna look at complying with that far-reaching piece of legislation that requires 175 communities to zone near a half a mile to a station of putting multifamily housing in if allowable, you know, from a wetland standpoint, wet heavy. So I think we need to comply with at least submitting the form.
Okay.
Because we don't want the town not to be eligible for any future grants. I mean, it was pretty heavy-handed legislation, but it is what it is.
Do you have any comments?
So many comments. I wanna be careful what we're signing up for, just to get potential grants. Because if we sign off on that and it makes us have to put multifamilies and all these things, what does that entail? What are you signing?
Well, we're just signing this information form. You know, contact information, whatever. However, you know, the town won't be required to put any action plan in place until July 1st, 2023, and-
Yeah, but what do they want in the action plan?
Pardon? You have to create a zone that allows 15 dwelling units per acre.
Twenty.
Why would they agree to that?
Fifteen units per acre for a total of 715 new units.
That's against what our law would say.
With any half a mile of a station.
So they are saying the state passed a zoning requirement that the town, if it wants to receive any grants under the housing authorities?
How many grants do we get right now from them? And what are they talking about?
There's three. By completing this fairly simple form, says the email, the MBTA community will remain compliant for the FY '23 round of funding from the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Funds Project, and the Massworks Infrastructure Program.
So this just means you have to fill out the form? It doesn't mean that we have to actually-
No, he just said we have to comply by-
But we don't, right, but we don't have to have in a zoning requirement right now. It just says that we have to start the process.
Or we don't want to do it.
If the board doesn't wanna do it, or if the town doesn't wanna do it, then it's not gonna pass the town meeting. I just don't see where the zone actually fits into. Amy?
All right. Number one, on that last note, Complete Streets obligated us that immediately by signing the obligation, which is the form he is talking about, it allows the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to change any of your laws by signing that document. Number two, if you read 40R in its entirety, any monies that you do receive for it has to be repaid in the last section of the law. It is absolutely not something we need to take in. We went over it in Planning Board a year and a half ago. And I think it was about a year and a half ago. And it's bad. I've read about it. I printed it out for the last Planning Board meeting. We did not get to talk about it. However, I have done the research. And I would caution you on signing anything, because I believe he said that by next year we would have to start complying.
And we'll have an action plan.
Yes. And there are, but I would not sign it. It is not benign. If you read the implementation plan, you will find that it is not benign. It's the same thing with Complete Streets. You know, like, that whole thing with Complete Streets is as soon as you've signed, you now allow the laws to be changed, and you had to pay $38,000 to apply. I don't know if there's any application fee in this one. However, we had to do 15 projects of engineering in order to get maybe 400. We had an engineer in front of us telling us this whole entire thing. She wasn't even from the state, and she was selling us engineering. So to do 15 projects out of our Chapter 90 money was a waste of money, to not even know if we'd get 400. And we, I think we calculated that it would be someplace between $200,000 and $250,000 on the low end to do the engineering to maybe get the $400,000. Again, that wasn't there. 40R is being fought in Braintree. They are really upset that they ever did it. It's ruined their infrastructure. And we already went through this in the 80s when we had double sessions. So double sessions, do you think our teachers are gonna do double sessions again, where our kids would go to school at 6, get out at 2, and then have the second section, 2 to 6, at night? I don't think that we would be able to have that capacity. Also, we have problems with water already. We have problems with our streets already. And I think it would be a really bad idea. I wouldn't sign it. I would hold off.
I don't wanna sign it. So if you need a unanimous vote, or I don't-
All right, well, there's no motion, so I guess, Ed, you don't have to do it.
Thank you. And that was the surprise I had for Ashley. She was gonna-
You really love to spring those things on me, Ed. You do.
Well, I just had to do it this afternoon, so I had to have her put a contact person in there. And you were gonna be here a lot longer than me, so.
Well, lucky for you. I don't agree with that, so.
All right.
I got my instructions. Thank you very much.
All right. Designate a municipal hearing officer.
Oh, we talked about this. So I thought it should be you. Remember?
Yeah, but you're gonna be here a lot longer than I am.
How do you know?
So-
How do you know that?
So, well, your term's for another two years. Mine's for three weeks, so. So I would motion you to be the municipal hearing officer.
Do we have to do this right now? Can we wait for the rest of the board?
No, we need to do it, because you gotta sign up for the training class. And the training class is Monday, May 23rd, from 10 to 12. Virtually. Lucky for you, it's virtually. So I make the motion to appoint-
Is there anyone else we can do with this?
Nope. Nope, because it can't be a building official. It can't be anybody from the fire department.
Awesome.
So I make the motion to appoint Ashley Disesser as the municipal hearing officer.
Well, I guess I have to second that, don't I?
All in favor? Aye.
I hear you. Aye, yes.
There we go. All right, that one's done.
No, we're not passing it on tonight.
You don't need to sign anything. But if you want, here's the information on the training.
Thanks so much, Gordon. You're such a pal.
Yep. All right. Review the warrant at the end. So Historic Society Use of Town Green. Is there, they received a letter from Susan Basile. Dear Board of Selectmen, the members of the Halifax Historical Society would like the permission to hold their annual spring plant sale on the Town Hall Green on Saturday, May 7th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. If permission is granted, the members would be setting up tables around 6:00 a.m. and waiting for the arrival of the plants and flowers. No rain date is being requested. We appreciate if this notice would be placed on the community bulletin boards. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Very truly yours, Susan Basile. No other conflicts with that date, correct, on our calendar?
We should bring in a whiteboard or something.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I move it.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Can we ask that it be put on the bulletin board?
Caesar. He's over there.
Okay. We need to appoint a representative to the Old Colony Elder Services.
Can we, like, wait three weeks on something?
So I would, no, we need somebody. Halifax does not have a representative currently.
Does it have to be done by? Then it's like a May meeting, but.
We're gonna redo all of this in three weeks. And there's no physical way that I can expect everything that you're asking me to attend in the next three weeks.
Please notify us on official town letterhead by May 31st. All right, so you can have a period.
Let's hold that off till the first meeting, when we actually have a board that can function.
We have one that can function, just, we can-
Just not on all matters.
Sign it to you. All right, next up, we have a live entertainment. Cruise nights at Halifax Walmart. This is for live entertainment. Radio and DJ to make announcements. From May 6th to September 23rd, Ralph Smith to be sober at all times. Parking on the right side of Walmart parking lot and backfield. No parking in the fire lanes behind Walmart. A minimum 18-foot fire lane at all times. Open fire for non-cooking purposes requires the fire department permit. LP gas grills are not permitted inside, on balconies above the first floor, and a minimum of 10 feet from the building. No fireworks and no explosive devices. This permit is granted in conformity with the statutes and ordinance related thereto expires on September 23rd at 8:00 p.m. or unless sooner suspended or revoked. Is there a motion to approve?
I move it.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Thanks, Gordon.
That was an easy one.
It really is specified that he asked to be sober?
Yes.
It's probably safer to probably give more details.
I approve of that, but it's like the fact that it has to be, like, actually in writing.
Okay, we have a request from the Ragnar relay, which they were going to try to do two years ago, but because of COVID, it was canceled. So they are looking to hold the event. The Ragnar Relay New England Event will take place on Saturday, May 21st, 2022. Letter explains the relay, how it's organized, safety, volunteers, community impact, and insurance coverage. So-
We have nothing out there, right?
So it is between the hours of 1:00 and 8:00 a.m.
It's clean-up day, too, right?
It doesn't interfere. It's 1:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.
Did we do this last year?
Yeah, they're long gone, yes.
They didn't do it.
No, they did do it last year.
It's a relay. Yeah, they did it last year.
Yeah, they did do it.
It's a relay. It's a relay.
But it was a lot smaller past-
It was a lot smaller because of the, yeah, the COVID.
Okay, so you're okay with it?
Yeah, I have sent a letter to the board and the fire department. We never had details. They have plenty of security, plenty of people to respond to emergencies if there's injuries. They use the sidewalks to run in. The only time we'll have maybe somebody help out is at 36.
Turn.
Because they cross the street. But even then, they have, like, flashing things, LED lights. They're all set.
Okay.
They're good to go.
Is there a motion to approve?
It interferes with the cleanup. They might be picking up stuff as they run in.
Oh, that would be great.
Reach out to them.
I move it.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, we have East West for town meeting. So Caesar, you would talk to Rich at Area 58?
Yeah, we're still working on the specifics, but we don't think we need them. I have to talk to Rich about the audio. But as far as, you know, last time I talked to him, I'll be still planning on sending him the word.
Oh, sorry. All right, we'll get back to that. Ashley just pointed out we had a 4:15. Marilyn McDonald and Don Nagel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Marilyn McDonald with McDonald Industries. Kim thought it a good idea to come in this time. Where in the past we have been before the Board of Selectmen with Charlie Prior Administrator on the site of Marilyn's Landing down the street for support letters on different items that we work with the DEP. We just did the catch base and cleanings last year. And now we're asking for a support letter for the same type of soda that we're taking if falls under regulations of remediation soil waste. I believe, Kim, I don't know if you were able to send them all those email notes.
The question was, Bob Ballard was gonna be here today to talk more about it. I do not predict anything out there.
I feel like they think the meeting's at 5:00.
What?
I feel like they might think the meeting's at 5:00 when the hearing starts.
I do not, I'm sorry. I take topics that you like.
I have some, if you want to do.
Oh, sure.
I speak with Bob a lot on the project. I believe he wasn't coming tonight.
He wasn't, okay.
So you're looking for a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, usually it came from the town administrator, but Board of Selectmen, town administrator, either one. It's appropriate for us to EP.
Okay.
Okay.
I know that Mr. Winowitz would like to speak, but I know that there were, have been issues previously about the truck traffic.
Truck traffic is always something that we're on top of. And the P is, is that you?
Nope.
Okay, is that you? I don't know. Thank you for being my eyes. So we tried very hard. This is what we hit out of every, every person that comes in, the drivers and stuff. It is a map. It is the rules. I only had brought one copy with me. You can take it and pass it around. So we tried very hard to make sure that no trucks go on side residential road. Big, big, big no-no. And, you know, no matter how hard you try, sometimes they miss the shot and a truck will turn around. I know last time Charlie had spoken about it. You know, we had offered maybe to put a sign up on the road. Didn't, you know, anything. I mean, we can only do so much with a truck if they-
If they miss the turn.
If they miss the turn. But, I mean, Chris, I have to thank you. Your eyes have been phenomenal. If they do get fined, everything goes to the Halifax Food Pantry. So when the truck does miss the turn, it chooses to go down the residential road. And I can't tell you how much I drilled to the, you know, the truck company. Please make sure they have their map and rules. They have phone numbers to call us. They can GPS it. We say right up to Halifax, like, you know, like, but when I see that email, I'm like, ah! How did he go down that street? So I am open for anything that would help a truck. Not overshoot that.
That's not ours. I guess the question would be, how much money has been donated to the Halifax Food Pantry?
Well, so since we've been doing this, it's been, oh, and we have it on record when it comes down. So, I mean, the $200 fine is strictly for Circuit in Laurel Street. So, and then McDonald Industries also donates to, came from a family of eight, my husband. So it's the Food Pantries in Bridgewater and Halifax. They get fined. So we, minute a truck gets spotted and verified, the fine is passed in. So I would say this year, we've had three trucks. The one the other day was not a lost truck for us, but three trucks. And then, once I verify it, I take it fined right away. And that's, I'm trying everything to keep them off the street.
Can you find them more?
I can.
Go for it. They'll stay off the road.
But that's three trucks over what period of time?
This year. I mean, since we've been, you know, rarely hammering the fines, it's like, you know, and I keep telling him, you know, I'm gonna get away with it. I got eyes. I'm like, I got eyes, so.
You might wanna see some of these.
Okay, Chris?
The problem we're starting to have, because we all know our streets in town.
Yep.
Some need a lot of work. And the streets that are still good, we should do whatever we can to, you know, preserve them.
Yep.
But now each single truck that comes up is breaking the road up. That was just the latest incident. There was multiple trucks that came in a row. And as they churn, these are all the tides of Mike's, they started breaking all the asphalt up. And just a couple of years ago, Halifax, I mean, Circuit Street Laurel was in pretty good condition. It's rapidly deteriorating. They popped all the, as the tides move over, they popped all the asphalt up. There's some of the trucks.
Do you have a camera over there?
Yeah, they go right past the dead-end sign. Then they have to back all the way up the street. And now, within the last year, this is like what Circuit Street's starting to look like. So it's starting to become, you know, even if it's just a couple trucks, each single truck now is doing damage.
We're up for anything to keep them off the street, believe me. This is my community, too. We're on one street.
And I know, you know, we can't allow streets to get damaged. We already have enough problems, you know, all the way up other streets and.
I think there is a sign up front of the, is there a sign up front?
Not on 106, there is not.
Yeah, I think prior, we had mentioned, you know, we would, you know, be willing to put up a sign up the street if that would help, you know, the truck is. I mean, honestly, I do flips trying to keep these trucks from, you know, if they shoot that turn, you know, we, you know, we got a sign up on Little One, but if they shoot that, they just tend to go to the first street they see, which is a small residential road. So, I mean, you can see, they have to come in every drive with that map and rules. And it's like, you know, we tell them, there's a bigger thing that if you overshoot that, just go down further. There's a nicer area. You can turn around. So I'm up for anything to figure out how to. I mean, we have definitely cut them down, definitely.
Yeah.
Yes, we have definitely cut them down.
To first pay their attention, I mean, we do like-
I had no idea till I came to my attention, yeah.
Four, 10 wheelers all at the dead end, and they're all trying to back up and.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd be happy to put a sign up, which I think would help a lot.
It's a town. We've allowed that.
Chief?
The town allows it.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to go to Steve about that. But like, what he's gonna tell you is the same thing that he has of his road. He has a sign that says, you know, no overweight vehicles, and they still go through there. You know, it's, and, you know, I talked to Chris, and it's one of these things that it's so random.
So can we, can we put up a sign that says not to, not for Marilyn's Landing? Like, be specific about the sign?
Yeah, we could put a sign for anything. And we could put a sign, no overweight vehicles. I mean, you know, Steve can order it, and I, you know, whatever, how they wanna pick it up.
Believe me, we don't want them down there. We do not. We've been, you know, open since 2013. We find us a new ones that haven't been there, and that's the ones we drove. Please, please pay attention to those non-venables. My husband's on site every day. There's a number there. You know, it's like-
Yeah, I mean, Steve showed me the stuff that she showed the board. And I, you know, I think they've gone above and beyond, you know, just to make sure that the trucks are where they are. Fortunately, today it happened again. You know, if somebody's not familiar with the area, it's a random driver, they don't follow protocols, they're gonna end up there. I mean, a sign could help, but, I mean, by the time they sign, if, you know, depending on where you position it, if the truck's making, already made the turn, he's just gonna keep going. He's not gonna-
I mean, if he's coming eastbound on 106, maybe we put the sign on the opposite side of the street.
This just came up this past week and never noticed before, but there's no sign at the end of your driveway.
Yeah, we just, yeah, in fact, we just-
We were wondering, you know, because you go by all the buildings. You almost don't even see the street.
I just saw it, some, Chris, with arrows going in. So again, I am with you. I'm bending backwards.
It's like a big neon thing, just rushing, neon thing. Marilyn's Landing, Marilyn's Landing. But I think the biggest concern now is the streets falling back. Now it's like each single truck is accelerating.
We don't want them on there, believe me. We want to run up that truck road right in.
So I don't know what fine the board can assign to the trucks for going on that road, for destroying the road without talking to Steve to see?
Well, yeah, I mean, the thing is, as far as the board finding the trucks, you can't. It's a public roadway, unless there's, you know, we put up, you know, overweight vehicles and that, you know, I would say we'd have to be involved in that. And then make sure that it's, you know, something that we can, again, and it's gonna be the whole thing, is catch it in the act. And then make sure that it's a, you know, something that we can, again, and it's going to be the whole thing, is catch it in the act, documenting it. And it's, you know, it's one of these random things.
You could do a truck exclusion.
Yeah.
And you know what? I'll be happy to increase the fines. As you can see, I doubled them, you know, for that. They don't really hit any other residential roads. They come right down 106 and overshoot that. And, and it's going to be their street that they turn on. So, I, whatever you guys...
I think talking to Steve and getting the signs up at your property to show exactly where they are, all your arrows, everything, maybe putting a sign up.
Not, not access.
Do not enter.
Yeah. If you're, if you're comfortable paying for the sign, if we talk with Mr. Haywood and probably ask Mr. Winowitz again, and Chief.
Yeah, we can bring it up with our safety committee.
Yeah, would you bring it up at that subcommittee?
When's that meeting?
Whenever we decide.
You're on that one too, right?
Yes.
Here we go.
What is on your schedule?
All right, well, look at my schedule. I really got to write this stuff down.
Thank you. Whatever you guys, I mean, Pam has my contact.
Okay. Yeah.
You don't want to know.
I also have one other concern that's started recently come up. Is, is the plan still to elevate higher than the dump is now?
Yes.
And I've noticed Google Maps recently updated it. It looks like it's double the size and now there's a road almost going to the top of the dump.
We're going over two, yeah, we're doing the two properties right now, so.
So, we're on the Halifax property now?
Working on the Halifax, yeah. The last year's some repairs. And all this is a good thing. But right now, what we're doing for the towns is both Bridgewater and Halifax get street sweepings tested. And catch basins, which we just approved last year, are free of testing and free of reuse at the site. This new permit will also be giving some voluntarily revenue back to the towns. Because I've got to say, the two towns, Bridgewater and Halifax, have been extremely supportive. And this is a, a good project. That area needs fixing. And now we're figuring out with, with this, which MasDEP supports, also how to give back to the community. So, that's a conversation for a little bit later on, once we work everything out with the permit. But there'll be definitely some community benefits.
What is the, what's the final plan once you get to the elevation that you, you have approved? Are you putting in solar panels?
Solar panels, yes, solar panels.
Well, the thing I've noticed recently, as the gain in height and it's getting bigger, is the dust. And contaminants, I've checked at the EPA, that can blow for miles of contaminants all over the land.
We just put it in the water and well. We have to maintain those areas and keep them all wet down. We go from dry to water season very quickly. So, we just, everybody was out there today, Republic, we just got the...
What about 24 hours a day when no one's there? Because a few weeks ago, it was like on a Sunday weekend, and the sun was setting in the west, you could see the haze of dust. Because we had a strong lens that day, just blowing over the dump. And that can go for miles all over the land.
We have four miles away. We have, they are every weekend ourselves. You can call us and we'll gladly come down and check in if we have to re-wet it down. We will re-wet it down at that time. We, we're, we're here with you too.
But I think that should be for the town to be considering, because even the pollutants doesn't even have to be visible dust. There's a lot of stuff that you won't see too, that can travel miles in the contaminants.
Yeah, DEP requires an aggressive dust control for the state, and we are following that. And even if it becomes a problem the weekends, the McDonald's will respond to it.
We're in the process of seeding some areas too, Chris. So, once you seed areas, and we just made a road that has a non-dusting. So, you know, again, we, you know, we're doing everything MasDEP wants us to do. And, and, you know, more because, again, we're down there too. This is also our community. We live four miles to, you know, up for the parcel down there that, like, one of the kids. So, we're very compassionate about this project too.
Good. I think we need to write a letter in support, but I, I would add to it that the residents of the area had concerns about dust and contaminants and want, want to be able to, there's a phone number that can be shared with the town. So, if residents have concerns, that we could, that we could post it, because we're not going to be here on the weekend, so.
We are on the weekend, so we will provide.
So, if we could, you know, post it someplace, if there's, if there's concerns, that we can post it and they can contact you.
Thank you, Paul. We're always right around. None of us go anywhere without somebody making sure that the site is checked seven days a week. And we're also, we will be working with Republic to do some paving too, which will help cut some of that down.
Okay.
But we will do everything.
Okay.
As a nurse, a mother, grandmother, I'm on the same page as you.
Is that fine?
I love it.
I'll second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Why do we do that?
Thank you. Chris, do you have their contact information?
Uh, email.
E-mails, and my number's underneath it, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just probably had to look at it.
That's right. I'll set it to you in Holliday. But again, thank you for your eyes and, yeah, certain times, but we'll work together.
Okay.
I appreciate it. We're working together. This is a good project and the town will see some benefits. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night, and I will.
East West Caesar. So, we put this back on the agenda and ask you to have Rich and you present next Tuesday while we cover...
One of the questions that we did have.
I'm sorry.
Would have an impact on what we're recommending in terms of having them, is we're planning on having two rooms in one.
No, we are planning on just one room, just the gym.
Okay, all right. If that's the case, then we think we have everything, you know, all the resources that we need.
Are we still going to have the screen and everything, like last year? You had the screen up and all that? You have all, you can still do all that?
We're, we're planning. I would say put it on the agenda next week, and then by, or whenever the next meeting is, and then by then.
Like, that's really important?
Yeah.
And I think we're going to need that screen for the COA staff?
Tomorrow. Well, yeah, tomorrow, Thursday. Which will be soon.
Our meeting Tuesday is at 1:00.
Yeah, 1:00.
1:00. 1:30.
1:30?
1:30.
We got an email from Lori Costaclin that she's running behind and not sure she's going to make it.
Okay, well, we'll just hold her off until the end and then go.
Okay. So, Caesar, can you present the plan and have you, Scott, and Rich work on that?
Yep.
Because Scott's going to be the one setting up the room with his guys.
Yep.
Okay. Maybe a plot plan layout of how you're going to, where you're putting the TVs and where you're putting the audio speakers? Because one of the issues that we have at town meeting is the audio for everyone up on stage to hear what's being said at the public mics. Because when they're set up underneath us, it just goes forward. No, it just goes forward and we can't hear it. That's why Tryon, I turned one of the speakers last year.
Okay, I don't know how the speaker, I can't remember how the speakers were set up at, at town meetings.
Okay.
Make sure that there are speakers available.
Okay.
I should probably go and check it. Do like a walkthrough before that Monday.
Okay.
So, it's one room gymnasium?
It's just the gym, yep. So, next up is a discussion and possible vote on the date for the special election. So, Sue provided us deadlines for the July 30th special election. Last day to obtain nomination papers would be June 8th at 5:00 p.m. Last day to submit to Board of Registers would be June 10th at 5:00 p.m. Last day for selectmen and notified clerk of vacancies on the ballot will be May 26th. Deadline to object, withdraw would be June 28th. Voter registration deadline is July 8th. Deadline to post the ballot, it says ballot, would be July 22nd. Special election date would be July 30th. And that would be for the treasurer collector's position. Is there a motion to approve?
So, my Sandy.
Had you thought about doing the special election at the same time as the primary, so that you would save money on the election? Instead of spending money for a special election in July, doing it in September?
So, when we had, when I talked to Sue about it before, she wanted to keep them separate.
Oh, that was a fine impression.
That's what she had said when I first talked to her about it.
If we mix it, what does that look like?
That would push it into September.
It's not horrible, but I would want to talk to Sue about that before we decide on that.
All right, so you want to push this to next week though?
Yeah.
Okay, you can ask her for this special primary, to have the special on the primary. Okay. Ambulance abatements? All right, make a motion to abate March ambulance 2022 for $91,345.92?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second. Sorry, second, I wasn't paying attention.
Okay. All in favor, aye? All right, we have a 5:00 public hearing.
So, we have the articles.
So, we have the warrant articles to talk about, and we have executive session.
We need to go into?
We do need to go into executive session.
So, do you want to do it?
And we have the police chief here.
Session now, and then come out and go over the articles after the...
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, I move to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations for sergeants, patrol officers, firefighters, highly mixed unit, and HES as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining. An open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. The other one, we don't have to, right?
And we do have an update on...
Okay, and then to talk about the 12 taxable inhabitants of Town of Halifax, first Town of Halifax, is discussing strategy with respect to litigation. An open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town.
The chair so declares on both. And we will come back to open session after this.
Yep, I moved it.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Ashley?
Yes.
Gordon, yes. All right. 56. So, we got your email, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, June 18th, from 12 to 3, is the requested time for the town hall green. You've met with Chief Shavas, Chief Verros, contacted the Board of Health, reached out to Halifax Library and Halifax Cultural Council.
We're just pending the entertainment, so.
Yeah, so we're still looking for a destrockie that would volunteer, so I don't know if that's going to happen. We do know that we have some performances that we, we just don't have a lineup yet. The kids at the music program at the high school have expressed a lot of interest in coming and doing some songs. At nothing, at, at, at a minimum, we might borrow like the speaking system from the Halifax girls softball. If you want to say, you might be able to help us with that. So, we secured porta potties. I actually met with Nino's in Kingston today. They got Board of, Board of Health approval for their ice cream truck.
Okay.
She's spoken with the Board of Health here. They said if Kingston approves it, more than likely, it's not an issue. She's got a date for all of that, so. And I think she's scheduled to do something in May at the elementary school. So, they should be fine with their licensing at that point.
Do we need to give a live entertainment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Once you guys have that, we can do that.
Okay.
If you guys approve this event, we're not doing it. We'll have to send a letter.
Okay.
And that you approve.
Okay.
There's nothing on the calendar.
So, for a live entertainment permit, what does that?
It's just another thing that we have to approve.
Okay.
So.
Are there restrictions or things that, like guidelines that we should try to be within, or?
I think it just says like, no infi- by music after 9:00, but that's not...
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah.
A lot of the restrictions probably wouldn't apply, but I think you still have to get the permit. I think we have to approve it. We can...
Yeah, and we have time to figure that out. We're hoping, you know, in the next, the kids, most of the kids that would be performing are in the middle of hosting. This is tech week for their play, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the date of Saturday, June 18th, from 12 to 3 on the town hall green?
I move it.
I'll second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori.
Can I ask one, one or two more questions?
Sure.
Jumpy, is that something?
Do you have that?
So, Jumpy, we need to have an insurance policy.
Okay, so...
Naming the town as insured.
Okay, so we can pursue outside insurance. I don't know what we have to do for that. That's something for me to take back. But we had requested the library board trustees maybe sponsor us. Is that, or the cultural council, is that something? I think Pam, you were on that email.
Yeah, I was on that email. So, our insurance policy here for the town, they do not include that in the policy. What you could do is like wherever you go to rent the Board of Health from, they have an insurance form. They might have an insurance company. But what you have to do is you have to list the town as additional insured.
Okay.
So, you can ask them if they have like some type of policy on it that you guys would be on over that.
Okay.
Again, we'd have to be listed as additional insured.
Oh, being insured?
Yeah.
Okay. And I wanted to make you aware, I actually did not meet with the police, I'm sorry, the fire chief.
Okay.
But he did send an email saying he had no issues, so, okay.
I talked to him.
Okay.
Him and Police Chief Richard.
Okay. Oh, and as far as the detail goes, we don't have any sense of the scope at this point. And Chief Shavas said that he would, as long as it was in like 48 hours, we could request the detail.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you all have that. It's on camera. So.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a public hearing on earth removal permit. So. Do we have the actual language? So, notification, Town of Halifax Public Hearing. The Halifax Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 26, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, for the purpose of hearing. An application submitted by Morris Brothers for an earth removal permit on the property located at 0 Plymouth Street and 250 Lingan Street. Assesses map 29 Lot 1 and 2. Okay, we'll open up the motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, where's the applicant's representative?
I'll go over here. So, point to the plan.
All right.
I'm Kevin Brady from Brady Consulting, representing the applicant for the earth removal permit. I'm here with Brendan Mokwin, who's the controller for Morris Cranberry.
Okay.
And also here is Ryan Blocko, Brightco Excavating.
Okay.
So, we're working with both these guys to prepare the plans for the earth removal permit. The applicant submitted a application under the Halifax Town Bi-Law, Chapter 144, Act 1 and 2, for the earth removal. We submitted a detailed application of plans detailing conformance with the requirements of the earth removal bi-law. I'm just going to go through the conformance requirements and then the conditions to detail how we met the requirements. So, Section 144.2 has a number of requirements, including payments of advertising in the meeting. We prepared, section number 2 underneath that section requires a precise site plan, which we prepared in conformance of that. Provided the legal name of the property owner. We obtained certified butter's list of 300 feet and notified all the butters, provided proof of clarification. Morris Cranberry had us do a survey of the entire property, which is pretty extensive. We had endorsed by our professional licensed plan survey. The plan chose two for contours as required, which I can go through shortly.
Okay.
We also calculated an estimate on the removals, so we did the survey, got the current base or topography of the site. Then we did a proposed alteration plan, which has a proposed property associated with it. And we calculated the difference and came up with the 1.1 million cubic yards of material, including topsoil that I'll go through that we're going to retain on-site and reuse. We provided proof of tax payment, the good stores, the abandoned taxes, the good members of the town. And the site plan includes a map for the trucking route. I know we'll go over that again, but I'll just hit the high points on that. As, I think you're all familiar with the site. They recently had an earth removal permit for another section. I don't know if the selectmen were...
We cleaned up the last permit, but it wasn't presented to us.
Okay. So, the property really only has one means of access, and that's Lingan Street. They have pursued in the past secondary access through an butter here that, that had not been granted access. So, the only way to access the property is the public way of Lingan Street, which connects through Route 58 and is a short connection to the intersection of 106 and 50. 106 and 58, centrally located in, in, in town, and you can go in all four directions here.
Yep.
So the trucks will split in, in short order there. The conditions of the permit, this handful of conditions that are required, I'll just run through those real quick. No processing of earth and no auto reading, operation involving earth materials other than permitted removal shall take place on the premises. So in other words, it's not going to be a recycling site, not going to bring in materials and process them for sale, it's strictly going to be the earth removal, the processing of the, the earth from that, from the construction. I should probably jump the gun, let me go circle back just a bit and give you the overall plan here. The, Morris Cranberry wants to do a bog improvement project here, that's the, the purpose of the project. The current bogs are oddly shaping, they're difficult to maintain and to work. This scale, it's easy to see probably up close, this scale, but.
Turn it up.
So this is the existing condition, and they want to do a bog improvement project. They also own bogs in several other locations, Canada, Wisconsin, and they've done improvement projects in those locations that have produced better cranberries, more volume, easier maintenance, fertilizer, et cetera. So as you can see, these are all the bogs in odd shapes that were constructed, yeah, years ago. Just want to go to a sheet where we can see the proposed bogs. So what I'd like to do is expand the footprint of the existing bogs, but also reshape, expand beyond the existing bogs, but reshape the, the bogs into 100-foot wide swaths. At this distance, they can have better maintenance and fertilization of, of the bogs, and basically what happens is there's a, they can put a 90-foot boom on the, on the machinery and, and fertilize and access the bogs in this shape in a more efficient manner. What they do now is they fly a helicopter and they, they spray it. This is no real way to reach the center of this bog. What they'd also like to do is to excavate some ponds for flooding the bogs. When they create these canals and watering holes, when they draw the water from here, that will allow them to reduce the withdrawal that they have from Mont Ponce Pond currently. They're permitted to withdraw from Mont Ponce Pond, but if they control their, their own ponds and they get this additional volume, they'll, they'll have better water access. So, and then the expansion of the bogs and removal of the earth, this, it's a two-pronged thing there, they're going to expand the footprint of their bogs, and by removing the, the additional material, that's going to help to pay for this expansion and revitalization of, of the bogs and the project. They also want to change the type of cranberry, they want to change the vine to a more efficient vine. So as I indicated, they've, they've got properties in other locations in the country and also in Canada that they've, that they've done this before, and this is a, basically a, a modern way of approaching the bog farming. Brendan can probably speak a little more to that if necessary, but I'll get more to the conditions and the requirements. So that's the overview, that the Board of Selectmen is, is charged with permitting the earth removal permit, so that's why I was getting right to that portion of this. So, I went over the first condition, we're not going to bring in materials and process it there. Condition two is the same thing, that no earth materials formed to the subject premises will be brought on and deposited, we're not going to bury stumps or anything, so the applicant's going to grind, grind the stumps in the operations area. This blue highlighted area is what we've proposed for operations, for screening, processing, loading, stockpiling, et cetera, for the first few phases of, of the project. And I'll see. This processing area was chosen, it's, oh, over here, it's the furthest point from abutting residences, so we've tried to locate the earthworks and the processing away from those areas as much as possible. Earth removals shall be performed in phases on land areas of not more than five acres, here and after referred to as phase areas. The applicant's requesting a waiver on this, this property is 67 acres, some of these bogs themselves are over five acres. We broke this into, I believe, three phases. Five acre phase areas would be very difficult for them to, to construct this. They would have to do 100% construction of, of that section of the bog at five acres, so it becomes problematic with the setup and staging of the earth removal. We can circle back to that if you have questions. The permit grantee shall to the satisfaction of the board's stake and mark clearly all phases, areas, buffer zones, with scheduled four-way piping. So around the perimeter, we've shown at 50-foot intervals, I, I believe, all around the perimeter, we will stake out the limits of the work, we agree to that requirement. Before excavation starts, the permitee shall agree to drill well locations in numbers determined by Halifax consulting engineers. Consulting engineers, the Halifax Water Department, who will conduct initial tests to determine ground and well elevations. All excavation shall be at least seven feet above groundwater elevation as determined by the Halifax Water Department, except permitted agricultural uses and excavation areas for drainage. This is a permitted agricultural use, it's currently permitted as such. We, we agree that we can install monitoring wells, there's no issue with that. Most of the site is, the site is already closer than seven feet to the groundwater, majority of the, these bogs. Number six, no excavation below natural grade of any boundary line should be permitted closer than 50 feet to such boundary. Again, Morris Cranberry had us do a complete survey of this site. We located all wetlands, tree lines, photographic areas, property lines. We designed the site so that no work is done within 50 feet of any wetland resource area or within 50 feet of any perimeter boundary. All these large red dots that you see are the PVC pipes. All along the property here as well, or greater than 50 feet from the property lines, so we agree to that condition, and we designed the project as such. No topsoil shall be removed from the subject premises, I discussed that a little bit, they, they're going to strip the topsoil, store it in the processing area for use in bog construction, they're also going to use it for replanting the side slopes along the edges of, of the property for slope stabilization, so they're going to utilize that, no need to remove that from the property, that's the material they need. The finished level and grading shall leave no slope exceeding 3 to 1. We designed the site for 3 to 1 on, or more on the perimeter. These drainage holes are below, the ponds are below grade, they are, they are steeper, but they're also under, underwater, they won't have erosion issues. I think the purpose with 3 to 1 side slope is an erosion issue, it's the natural repose angle of the soils, so that's why the 3 to 1 is on the, is the max for graded areas. I don't know that this applies to ponds for water usage. Number nine, the subject premises shall be kept free from any debris, including tree No debris generated from the site shall be buried. Again, the stumps are going to be ground right on-site, logs that are removed for tree removal will be removed from the property, and brush will also be grounded at the site. Records showing the amount of earth removed shall be provided monthly, we agree with this requirement, we can monitor that as, as needed. Number 11, no earth removal or related operations shall take place except between hours of 7 and 5, Monday through Saturday, in case on legal holiday, et cetera, we agree with that typical term. Preservation of trees, bushes, and other vegetation. Interacting with fencing may require a muscle injection or muscle conflagration. The closest residential dwelling from the limit of work is approximately 450 feet, the operations area is located about 2,700 feet from the closest residential dwelling. Majority of the remaining excavation is located at a significant distance, so. So, I don't know if you can see at this scale, but basically this is the neighborhood on Lingon Street, right, right here.
Do you, do you know where the well is from that area?
Wells are in, up here. Don't have, showing this.
All these are already some.
We did show the Zone 2 lines on here. I thought, so, in some cases, leaving the aerial underneath makes it easy to see, but in other cases it's hard to find with the small lines on it. I did not locate the well, so I should show them on here, but we can start to do that. The permit holder shall be responsible for all spillage on the public ways of the town. If it becomes necessary, the town will clean up and remove such spillage, the caution and charge of the permit holder, we agree to that term. Permit holder shall be responsible for all damage to public ways, we agree to that term as well, as we even here, talks about photographic evidence before we start and, and so that we have baseline, we agree to that. The permit is subject to a fee of 25 cents per cubic yard, the applicant agrees to the fee.
So also on that, it says the board can set a separate fee as well?
Okay, we're willing to discuss that.
Okay.
The earth removal permit is not transferable without approval of the board, we agree to that term. Shall notify the board in writing within 48 hours of any material change, circumstances, and or plans as represented in the application. We agree to that. Athlin agrees to acceptance of the permit to allow the board or its representative free access to the site, conduct inspections. We agree, but would appreciate, you know, a call, so nobody gets injured, it is a active site, but absolutely, we agree to that. No permit will be issued until a performance bond, letter, credit, or assignment of an account has been posted with the town, an amount deemed by the board to be sufficient for repair and restore of land for future use, as set forth in subsection D7. We agree to that requirement, that condition. Any permit issued by the board should be automatically expired upon the termination date stated therein. A special permit for any earth removals shall be not issued for more than one year's duration and may be renewed thereafter with a public hearing. We requested a modification of that requirement to five years, as you know, it's a million-yard excavation. What we suggest is maybe a annual meeting where we give the select board the status, if the board at that time at that meeting thinks there's been a material change, the public needs to be notified, we would then notify and, and have a public hearing.
Everyone come back every year, right?
Years, at 52 years old, they're going by fast, so.
So typically, so he's, he's talking about to hold a public hearing?
Yes.
We can hold a public meeting, but a public hearing requires notification of the bogs.
Correct. The board shall have authority to waive any and all conditions when and in discretion of the board, said waiver shall be in the public interest or not, inconsistent with the general intent of this chapter. That allowed me to ask for, you know, the few.
Yep.
Changes that we suggested. We provide a construction sequence, we have four phase areas that we are proposing. We did receive the peer review letter.
Okay.
From Amory Engineers. So, comment number one, based on the amount of earth removed, Amory is indicating that we've requested an extension of the time limit from one year to four to five years. Number two, talks about the zone, does not allow any use that would retain less than 40% of the lawn area and natural vegetation. This application actually meets that standard. I have not submitted my responses yet, just working out a few of these, so. The operations shed has been relocated outside of the Zone 2, Zone A, and outside the 100-foot buffer zone, in response to his next comment about storage of materials in the Zone 2. We can relocate that outside the, any of those environmental areas. VBL Section 16717 does not allow removals, soap, lawn, gravel, within four feet of the historic high water, groundwater area. Within four feet of the historic high water groundwater table. This is, so that section of the bylaw is put in, in conformance with DEP's. Three-ten CMR twenty-two, which is drinking water standards. And we are, so the site currently, those bogs are approximately three feet above the water table. And what we'd like to do is to match those elevations. Being that close to the water table for the bogs is, you know, Brendan Brown speaks to this maybe better than I can, but it's. All the bogs are near the water table for a reason. The plants, we need to be able to get the water to them. They like, they need to be flooded. They need access, the roots need access to water as well. So we wanna match that elevation, and that's how we came up with the, the site elevations. We are working on the, this response with DEP. We're working on it with a hydrogeologist. And we, well, we have not been in contact with the water department to discuss what they would like to do for monitoring wells. So that part is still. Still to be determined. So I think that's all I have for responses for now to the peer review.
Okay.
So again, it's expansion and revitalization of, of the bog. The owners find it's necessary to compete in the market and keep this farm active and. And making money. It's, it's an old, as I said, it's an old style bog. It's difficult to maintain and to work the farm. I don't know, Brendan, if I missed anything on that part that you'd wanna add to it. Otherwise, I'll take questions from that selectman.
Okay, so if you guys don't have anything to add, first I'll open it up to Pat.
Thank you, Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers. I did the peer review for the board. Kevin just went over some of my comments, but I'll just kind of reiterate and why I raised those issues. Comment number one was based on the timeline. If they're doing it for four to five years, I just wanted to point out that with an average trailer truck load, which is about twenty-eight yards. That's between thirty-four and forty-three loads per day, and that's taking out weekends and holidays.
That's about a truck.
Yeah. And then as he was talking about number two, the ABC and D, that's all to do with the aquifer and other protection district. It's in Zone Two. And there's pretty strict regulations on that, and your regulations are fairly strict. The forty percent, they, I'm sure they probably means of the natural vegetative cover. The storage of the commercial fertilizers, he said they're gonna move that out of Zone Two, so that takes care of that. But the, the distance to the water table, the four feet to water table, it's a, it's a town standard. It's also a DEP standard for wellhead protection. And, and the reason for the four feet is if you get a contaminant that's on the surface. Once it goes through four feet of sand or gravel or any type of earth material, it kinda, it removes those contaminants. That's why, if you're familiar with septic systems, you have four feet of distance between the barbony system and the groundwater. It's the same, same situation for the most part. The next one, and again, these are, these are, I raised them even though the planning board is a special permitting authority for the. For the work within the aquifer protection district, but I just wanted to raise the issues. Cause they're, they're issues that are, you know, significant, I feel.
Okay.
The next one is the regulation doesn't allow the removal of earth, loom, sand, and gravel, or any mineral in excess of fifty cubic yards. Not incidental, not incidental to the construction of a building. I think they get around that by calling for the gravel removal permit, but I just wanted to raise that issue. So MasDEP does a source water assessment protection report on every public water system. Halifax is, it ranked the susceptibility of Halifax's water supply whilst the contamination is high. And it was due to the use of storage, the use or storage of pesticides related cranberry bog operations within the Zone Two.
So if you expand the bogs, you're gonna have to expand the.
And, and you know, when I met with, with the applicant on site, one of the things that they, you know, were saying to me is that. With the reconfiguration of the bogs, how Kevin said with the boom, rather than doing with a helicopter, they have a lot more control over the amount of fertilizer. So I don't know if they can quantify if, even with the expansion, if they actually use less fertilizer, I'm not sure. But I just wanted to raise that issue.
Okay.
The. And then we, we assume that the existing cranberry bog operation has a water management act permit for the water withdrawal. It's required for every water withdrawal. And based on the additional bog acreage, they're gonna need either modified WMA, WMA permit or a new one for MasDEP. So I assume they're working with MasDEP on those things. And then number five was if you were to approve the earth removal permit, you know, in my recommendation that they comply with the regulation that it's not within four feet of the high groundwater. That's up to you guys. I just wanted to make that recommendation that, you know, in my, my company does a lot of water supply. That's actually what we specialize in, so I'm very familiar with the Zone Two requirements and so forth. And it's something that we, we work on all the time, so it's something that I, you know, feel strongly about is the drinking water and the protection of the drinking water.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry.
I sent a response, want to read that into the record?
Sure, if you want me to read it, I will.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it in?
Yeah, sure.
All right, so this is April twelfth, twenty twenty-two to the Board of Selectmen from the Building Inspector. RE, Earth Removal Permit Assesses Parcel Twenty-nine dash one dash zero, two fifty Leven Street. Please be advised, I have reviewed the proposed earth removal permit application and find. The said property falls within or adjacent to the Town of Halifax Y M C A wellsite, which is a DEP Zone Two Aquifer Protection District. This permit fails, falls under the jurisdiction of the Halifax Code, Chapter one forty-four. Soil Removal and Chapter one sixty-seven dash seventeen of the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Aquifer, Aquifer and Well Protection. More specifically, Chapter one sixty-seven dash seventeen F, subsection two dash twenty-eight. Schedule of Uses prohibits the earth removal of earth, loom, sand, and gravel, or any other mineral in excess of fifty yards. Not incidental to the construction of a building. I do not support the approval of the earth removal permit. And approval of this permit would be a direct violation of the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws. Sincerely, James Perry, Building Inspector, zoning enforcement officer.
Okay, let's write in. Any other comments from?
Yeah, I just, I tried to get ahold of DEP today to get their latest Zone Two map.
Okay.
I found one in the office dated two thousand and three by CDM. That shows a portion over there of the Zone Two. I also found another map in the office plan. Dated July second, two thousand and two. That is titled Zone Two of Area Halifax, Massachusetts. Prepared for Town of Halifax Land Planning, Inc. And this plan was compiled off of DEP approved Zone Two. MasDEP May two thousand and two, that it was at that time.
Okay.
So there's a pretty big discrepancy between the CDM plan and this plan. This plan pretty much shows according to MasDEP Zone Two, that the entire project is in Zone Two.
Okay, so we need to get that.
And again, I tried to get a more updated plan, but it was too late.
Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, the, the, the Zone Twos are shown, if you go on the MasGIS, they're on MasGIS. It's one of the layers that you can pull up, and it's the approved Zone Two.
Okay.
And actually, and I can do it for you if you want. You can download it as a shapefile, bring it in and overlay it right on the twenty twenty-one ortho photo, so you can see exactly where it is.
That would, that would be great if you could.
They should have it on the plan.
Do you have it on the plan?
Yeah. I mean, I can confirm, but they did say.
The point I'm trying to make is that the line that you have on the plan is the, the CDM plan that I have, but there's also another plan. And I, we need to find out where the discrepancy lies between both plans. They may have showed part of Hanson Zone Two that overlaps Town of Halifax.
Yeah, the, the DP, the online one, it, it doesn't differentiate.
Between?
It's just whether it's Zone Two or not, doesn't differentiate exactly which one.
So I think the CDM plan shows Halifax aquifer. But the Halifax Plan Done By Land Planning.
Shows all.
All Zone Twos, even overlapping.
Okay.
So I can modify, I can modify the plan to show that.
Could, could you confer with Mr. Brennan on, on what's approved and what isn't on the DEP website?
Yes, you can look at that, so there's a little line. Is, do you guys have? I'll, I will deal with that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll also do.
Okay, that would be great. Okay, does any member of the public have a comment?
You say a one to five-year project.
Can you just say your name and your address for the record?
Richard Holmes, I live on twenty-five Thirteenth Ave. Mary Le Corneille, the dirt road is in Thirteenth Ave, is up in the.
Last house that he's talking about.
Right there. Probably, let's go back about six years ago when they had a project going on. And so the, the roads would be maintained after they, after they hauled out, I think it was like over like twenty thousand yards or something like that. Whatever it was, I don't remember the exact yards. Those roads already got a little, but it was never fixed. We asked for temporary stop signs in the meantime of the, the trucking. We didn't get that. And we asked for a trucking to be within the school hours. Obviously, we all know it's a small neighborhood, right? There's a lot of kids playing, bicycles, no stop signs. We're, we're very worried about that. The only thing that we asked for, like, they can expand the bogs and everybody's gonna work, everybody's gonna expand, we understand. But we just like the trucking to be within school hours. No Saturdays. You know what I mean? You got summer coming up right around the corner. How many kids are in that neighborhood running their bicycles? How many families walking, dogs? It's a busy neighborhood in the, in the summertime, especially after when school gets out, especially its full year of school. The kids are really getting out now.
Yeah.
Especially after the couple of years of the whole COVID thing, you know, and like the kids outside, not on the computers anymore. So the thing that I was just, I'm worried about is the trucking.
Okay.
Very much. Keep it within school hours. I do road work, I have to, I get permitted, I can only work in school hours, you know? So I think, I think it would be a fair to do if you could ask for that in the neighborhood.
Okay.
How long would that extend the project?
That, that is the, the issue with doing the school hours is that it will extend the project. Yeah. So we're going five to eight, eight years. So it's gonna expand the duration as opposed to, you know, try to get it done faster for everybody, including the neighbors. Sooner it's done, then trucks are done. The Saturdays isn't an issue at all. We, we want that without any question, the Saturdays. We can even restrict some of the end of the day hours and any stop signs. That would be something I'd very happy to review. Anything that we could do to make it safer in that regard. The school hours is, is a real, is a real difficult thing to, I guess I have to understand what the, what school hours you'd be.
School hours are three months, six thirty to three.
So we could haul six thirty to three?
I don't think you can do six thirty, I think it's seven to three.
Seven.
Yeah.
But you gotta remember the kids are out there waiting for the bus too in the morning, you know? I mean, let's just think of everybody here in this room, how would you like?
No, it's a.
Thirty tractor trailer trucks going across you in your neighborhood every day, all day.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean?
Your concerns justified.
And, and most of the time, I mean, don't get me wrong with the picking season, that's harvest season, like absolutely, you know what I mean? That's fine, that's what, it is what it is. But, and they're, they're mostly, they are respectful. Like don't, even the trucks that go in and out, they are respectful. He's already had more than a few trucks coming in and out, absolutely. But the only thing I just ask for is like within school hours.
Not, not hauling material now, right?
Not hauling, just moving. Cultural stuff, moving machines in for barges, absolutely zero materials left for science.
Okay.
We could add signage regarding, you know, school bus stop hours during the, you know, duration of the project to remind the truckers that. You know, that there's kids getting on and off the school bus during certain time periods.
There needs to be signage no matter what, because we're going into summer vacation, so the school hours are gonna become relevant, cause these kids are gonna be out all day long.
Good point, so we could add additional signage about, you know, speed limits, et cetera. If, if it's okay with the police department, et cetera.
Traffic committee, there you go, traffic committee.
Put that one on the agenda too.
Mr. Winowitz?
Chris Winowitz, one twenty-nine Circuit Street. I had one question as he was presenting. You talked about part of the permitting process that they would cover any damage to the streets. And I missed right after that, you brought up something about the town could set their own fee.
Yeah, the, the bylaws says that the, it's a minimum of twenty-five cents per, per yard, but the, the Board of Selectmen can increase the fee.
Okay, but they would cover damage to any streets. So hypothetically, if a truck got lost off the permitted route and caused damage, would that still be, they had to pay for any damage on any street?
Again, I think that comes down to, I, I did re-watch the permitting process that was online on YouTube for what went through the last time. And where the road is probably already in bad shape. When you review a road and see how bad it is, it's still bad, it wasn't horribly. So the real issue is there's been no improvements to that road.
But there was no improvements after they hauled the last time.
I, I, yeah, right.
It was worse.
But we had, when we closed out that permit, highway came in here, correct?
So Steve came in and said it was no worse, so.
He had pictures from before they started and after they started and said that there wasn't enough damage to do that.
It, it made more gullies, the road was like instantly cracked, like within the first, I got pictures on my old phone. But I'm not, I'm not one to raise a stick on it.
No.
The road was more horrible, people drive slower, so that's great.
But that's what I was interested, it starts a crack, it might not look bad when the next winter comes, no.
Well, I mean, you're talking about a five-year project with that many tractor trailers going over it.
It's gonna destroy the road.
That's going to destroy the road.
Nothing you can do about it, it's gonna happen.
And it's already, it's not a great road, so.
Substandard road to stop. It's peanut butter.
So if they're willing to fix the road.
You can literally leaf blow our roads. They literally turn with a leaf blower, like the tire just rolls, no lack.
So I guess my question is, so in the permitting process, it can be set that they'll pay for any?
Yes.
Yes.
And that needs to be well-defined, and it needs to. A, a project, I mean, a project this long, that road's gonna have to be replaced.
What about the, no?
I mean, I mean.
The dust too, like all day, every day?
Yeah, so I guess we'll be looking for a dust protocol from you guys as well for hauling.
We have a watering truck for the entrance where it converts from asphalt to gravel, that's no problem.
In speak person, we have some speakers.
Now, would the repair of the road be to bring it back to what it's currently? Now, would the repair of the road be to bring it back to its current standard?
Uh, no. That would not be acceptable to this board.
Well, so there'd be required to bring it back to a what standard? And what, what's the purpose of the twenty-five cents per yard? Is it to improve road length associated or is there?
It wasn't. It's not, it's not, there's not an associated fee per mile. I mean, the cost of materials right now versus what.
We just upped that?
No, we didn't vote on it yet.
Oh.
The, the cost of materials to replace that road versus what the fee was set fifteen years ago are totally different. And that money that came from the last earth removal project was not spent on repairing that road. So they're, they're not.
They're not aligned.
They're not aligned.
Yes, sir. Question with the trucking, since these are all DOT inspected and taxpaying trucks, it's not off-road trucks. So does that factor into, you know, going over the road? I under, I understand the amount of traffic coming in and out of property, but they are state-recognized, state-inspected trucks.
No, I, I don't think it's an issue with the, the trucks themselves. It's just an issue of that many trucks going over that small area being for this one project. So I can say that I.
Sure. The trucking is fact that DOT certified, you know, regardless.
Yeah.
Correct. But I mean, they're paying their stipend to use town-recognized roads.
Yeah, but that's a really long project over, and that's your only way in and out.
Only access in and out, it's gonna destroy the road. So is America, this car?
Well, well, not, not at that same level on that road. I mean, you, you look at Langen Street now, you're gonna punch through certain areas. So we need to have some sort of plan on how to rebuild that road after this project is done. Whether it's bonded up front or, or it's bonded through the life of the project as profits are made from selling the material. It needs to be. Well, it needs to be at, at the final cost of repairing that road.
Right, excuse me, when the project's completed, at the cost of two months' warranty.
Okay. What would you guys think about? Obviously, it's like within school hours, right? What's gonna happen this summer? Is it gonna be all day, Monday, Friday still?
Well, that's what I was just saying. What do you?
Or we're just gonna go just during the school year?
I don't, I think that that would expand the project probably.
We can't just stop a project for two months.
Oh, I understand. I'm just like, wait, so, all right, we approve the, the school hours, say seven to three. When school gets out, then we're not gonna change these hours.
Now, that's just what it's gonna be.
So I think right now, just from the project perspective.
We still need that.
We've been told by the zoning enforcement officer, it's not allowable.
Right.
So it needs to be proven through peer review with Mr. Brennan, whether or not this site, where those lines are, whether or not it's an allowable project or not. I think all the other items of restrictions need to take place after. I mean, they need to get.
Yeah, we're playing a lot of what-ifs on a project that might not go through.
They, you need to go through that process. I mean, his decision would have to be challenged. And, and also you'd have to go through the planning board for all the other special permits first. So before anything comes to this board for that, you, you gotta go through that process first.
Can we get any copy of the zoning enforcement officer's letter?
Yes.
Yes, we can. So I, I would move to continue the hearing. How long is it gonna take to get? You know, I don't know your, your schedule and your schedule. How long is it gonna take you guys to line up a month?
The Zone Two stuff? I mean, I can get that over to him in a week.
Okay.
We're requested continuous for a month.
For a month?
Yeah.
Okay.
What does that mean?
What's that pushes to?
Let's see. Twenty-fourth, May twenty-fourth?
May twenty-fourth?
I mean, it's a little less than a month, but well, yeah, that's fine.
May. And, and how about six PM? Actually, hold on. One second.
Yeah. Love the five o'clock meeting.
Yeah, I, so we, we. We changed, we changed meetings for a little bit and now it's interfering with.
Your life.
Sports.
That's interfering with your life, boy.
It's interfering with sports.
Doesn't interfere with my kid's sports.
Well.
I'm fine with the five o'clock.
Just trying to bring up the schedule.
So it'll be Monday, Friday.
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-fourth is busy. It's busy.
Five or six weeks is, is, is fine.
Do you wanna do six weeks?
That's fine.
And we're gonna hold two meetings back to back again?
So June first.
So it'd be June?
Seventh.
Seventh?
Oh.
At six PM?
Can you do five that day?
No. Cannot.
That's not a very good meeting.
No, it's not.
All right, the fourteenth. Does that work? That's flag, that's Flag Day. Is that Flag Day work?
What about, what about this, what's our May meeting? The tenth and the?
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
It's not gonna work. It's too close. Okay.
So June fourteenth?
On my wife's birthday.
I'm glad you remembered that. That's really great that you remember that.
You won't remember that on the thirteenth, though.
That's my daughter's birthday.
Six PM?
Six PM, yeah.
All right, so I move to continue the hearing to June fourteenth, 2022, at six PM in this room.
Five second.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I can, hold on. Yeah?
So on. If it, if it comes back that you need to go in front of the planning board, would you try to do that before our?
Waters and.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try and get as much of this done. If we don't, if we have enough due, we'll request the continuous.
Okay, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Now, to go through the town meeting warrant.
Wait, recess in five minutes?
See you guys later.
Five minutes?
Oh, like forty minutes?
All right, two minute, two minute recess.
Appreciate that.
Cause I need to leave in, in five minutes to go to another meeting.
Five?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go through the warrant in five minutes.
Uh, you ready, Pam? All right, I will call the meeting back from recess. All right, so we're going to review. The articles. All right, so first up's the report of the finance committee. Then we have the school budgets. Article one, I'm going to read a statement for article one from the board of selectmen. I don't know if there's any other departments going to read a report, but that's the time to do it. Okay. Article two. Is wage and personnel. Has the finance committee voted on the one percent?
They have made a recommendation on the designation of the holiday.
Okay.
But not on the one percent.
Wait, should we be recommending or not recommending right now so we don't have to do it again?
Well, we're gonna go through this all with Paul and Bert.
I know, but Caesar needs to know what we recommend and don't recommend. You'll be fine for next week to do this, so why are we doing this for now?
So we, we know what.
Oh, I knew what I've been on all the FinCom meetings.
It doesn't hurt to make your recommendations now.
That's what I was saying. I thought that's what we were doing.
So.
Sorry, I thought that was the point of this.
I mean, you can also say recommendation at town meeting if you have.
I mean, they're already, they're already printed, so.
Right.
Right.
I thought that's what.
All right, so are you recommend, recommending? A?
Article one, you mean?
So article one is the town reports.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna recommend that. Are you recommending?
Yes, June eighteenth, yes.
Are you recommending B? Or are you gonna discuss that with the finance committee?
Okay, we can wait on FinCom for that one.
Okay. Yes.
A, we recommend.
So do you wanna just make a list and we'll make a vote at the end of recommendations? So we don't have to go through a motion and vote everyone. We'll just tell you which ones we're recommending and then make a motion at the end?
And which ones we're not. So right now, article two, A, we're recommending.
One, yeah.
One, yes, sorry.
One's the town report.
And B, we're gonna wait to talk to FinCom.
Two, A, yes, right?
Yeah.
Two, B, we're holding.
Three would be the same as holding. We're going to. All right, so four is the whole. Crust of. So this all is going to depend on what gets voted in the special and also what gets recommended and voted out of article two and three. So this is subject to change.
Okay.
This has the one percent included from the special. Does it have the one percent included that hasn't been recommended yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm doing here for the one percent that hasn't been recommended. I think that's okay. But I will also have available, if the special doesn't pass, the one percent, if the special doesn't pass.
Then we'll have to update.
I will have to amend it all.
Okay. So is there any lines in four? Bert, you gonna break it down same way we typically do? Subsection each one?
Probably, yes.
Okay. So you have any changes to the first general government?
I don't think so. I'm looking, hold on.
We're gonna have to vote to recommend the changes that night, so.
Okay, pass over it then.
So.
Pass over that, go to what we can actually.
Are there any lines that you're concerned about that the finance committee recommended that you don't agree with?
Well, yeah, the assistant collector, you guys wanted to go to forty hours, right?
The assistant treasurer.
Treasurer, sorry.
Yes, we have that to forty hours because during that, when you have a new treasurer or collector, the assistant treasurer, this, it just makes sense that that's going to need a few more hours and that.
I guess my question to that was why we're try, you were being asked for ARPER funds to fund IT, but we're going to be giving forty hours to the assistant treasurer.
Well, the assistant treasurer is, yes, the.
And we were supposed to level fund, I thought, this year. That was the plan. So I guess that was my question to FinCom as to why that became more important. So yes, I do have an issue with that one.
And you have an issue with IT wages?
Yes. We can't fund that with ARPER forever and it's not a part-time position and the workload.
Well, it is a part-time position. Oh, you mean?
Yes, it is a part-time position right now. It should not be a part-time position. We have one person. We do not have assistant to that. And the amount of workload that has come on the last year alone that I've watched, it's not sustainable to be a part-time position.
Well, then, why don't we either invite FinCom to our meeting on Tuesday or attend their meeting and have this discussion on Monday night?
They can come to us on Tuesday? I thought that we had asked them anyways to come to a meeting, didn't we?
We had asked them to come to this one, but she didn't hear back from us, you know, from, from FinCom.
So can we, can we ask them to come Tuesday?
Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
But you Tuesday, is that one, one thirty?
Well, so we can.
I can go to FinCom Monday, but it's, it's at six o'clock.
Do you wanna post us with FinCom? On Monday?
Do you guys want that to be a Zoom meeting?
I think it is anyway. Oh, us?
Well, it's attending their meeting, so if they have it set for Zoom and that's what they've been doing, that's what we'll do. So you have IT wages at fifteen, you have questions on, you have questions on twenty-three. Okay. Do we have? We broke out director of building maintenance and custodial staff. Uh, just a note on the schools. We did put a note. C, which it says this number has been reduced by seven hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars, which is being funded through the circuit breaker money received from the state. Sandy, did you get from Christine the amount that they projected for the previous years? So when that question comes up, what was spent? Okay. Uh, seventy-three. So we put a note on it this year because we talked about how much money was actually being spent. And the only way to actually fund next year is to carry forward the circuit breaker funds. Cause they would have had to.
I think she does that every year, though.
Well, but we would have wiped it out for this fiscal year if we don't do what the special. So I just think it's important to note how much money we're actually spending. Because it, we're spending close to four million dollars for that, but we never.
Do you want me to have that figured out? You have to call Christine.
Yeah, I, I would probably just go back to three years or four years that's on here. Because I'm sure that question's gonna be asked where it's not in the previous year's warrant. We've got tree maintenance listed twice.
True.
In this printout.
Eighty-nine sits on there twice.
I, I, is it in yours, Bert?
Eighty-nine, eighty-nine.
Okay. Okay. I didn't see it before. I didn't see it before.
All right, you go on that list approved for this.
Well, so typically I just do the math, but.
Have a time to look at it. Yeah.
Okay.
Does that carry into the total?
Probably.
I'll double check it. We can't make editorial corrections in the beginning, so.
We'll just make eighty-nines crossed out. The fir, the second eighty-nine's crossed out. Or the first, cause it's easier the way it's printed.
Because a lot of times I take my bigs from the spreadsheet, which doesn't have the double. I'll find out.
Does the. Does the solid waste include that latest contract?
So there isn't a latest contract. We've gone up to bid. We believe it will come in lower than that amount.
Okay.
But we are in the process of bidding it.
Okay.
And we are waiting, we're hoping that it's up in before time bidding and that we can lower that amount.
Okay, because that's gonna mean that the bag costs are increased and that probably means the recycle cost is gonna have. Okay, because that's gonna mean that the bag costs are increased, and that probably means the recycle cost is gonna have to increase as well.
Not the recycle, that's not the cycle, that's the bag cost.
So, none of the recycle money gets used for that? Okay. Alright.
But it will hit us hard if it doesn't.
Well, that bag cost's gonna go skyrocket.
And it will be, it will be an issue.
That's all, that's...
But that would be worth, um, you're talking...
Noting, yeah.
She's been dealing with that.
Okay. Maybe that's something we put into the selectments report.
Possibly, but I've tried to run with the facts.
Okay.
Let's hope, um, we get lower bids.
So, that we broke out the director's salary?
Yes, we were asked to break out those salaries, cause most of them are separate. Like, the library director is separate, so...
Okay. I'm just noting the stuff, cause we're on tape, so people are aware that the changes. So, if they watch this, they'll have some idea when they're reviewing the warrant. Well, we have an update for the cable TV 134.
That's changing?
I, I'm, I don't know, I just know that that's based on what we get in from Comcast, so I didn't know if you had, if that's just stable or not.
Okay. As far as I know, it is stable.
Okay.
The stumble was given to me, so...
Okay.
I have to reach out to our account representative, which also handles that contract, if I'm gonna try to...
Well, that, so, ca... that cable TV is actually the pass-through for PAC, the, the Area 58?
Right, no, I don't.
Okay.
That's the franchise fee that everyone can stretch.
Anything else, jump out to anyone? Yes, Caesar?
Might be worth talking to finance about the building maintenance clerical? Because there was another $40 increase position after that, which is a combination of two part-time positions, but it was an increase of, I believe, around $7,000 or $8,000.
Building maintenance clerical?
Scott McTurner's department.
Yeah, building maintenance, um, wait...
Custodial?
Custodial.
Custodial.
What line is it?
Forty-two. Okay. Only cause the guys from Mass Save showed up at my house this week. Did we... When you were speaking with Mr. Joy, did we get him all the electrical bills?
I emailed it to him this afternoon, once that he was missing.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping that he has everything.
Alright, cause he brought it up at the historic society meeting, that he didn't have...
He had been working on it, and there were a few missing bills. I worked on that this afternoon, and have emailed it to him, so I'm hoping that's everything he needs.
Okay. Because if we get a reduction on electricity costs following here, that'd be a savings.
That would be.
The police patrolman wages in the special. We'll need to update that number in this as well.
Where am I?
I'm skipping around, cause all these things are in my head.
I, I, I'm following, I stopped looking here, I'm just following him, where he's going on.
So, no, we don't have to update it. So, the article puts in the extra money.
Okay.
For, so, yeah, it should not have to be updated. And I've certainly talked to the chief of these things and asked him, he needs more.
Okay.
But the money that, it shouldn't have to be.
Come on, Bert, can't, can't you keep up? I flipped from, from subject to subject.
Just how work and framework...
It's not, it's not in order, it's, what did, what did...
It's gonna be a reduction, it's all coming in.
It's, uh...
Because of, because of the way the union articles are done, they add to...
To the line.
Rather than us suggesting the one. It adds to it after this.
Okay.
It's just the opposite. You know, if you're losing the specials, yes, there is a reduction, but to replace them in time and a half.
Well, it's gonna be, well, yeah, so that's, so that's...
It would be an increase.
That has to be...
From like, what, 160 to 288 or something?
Well, I mean, the, the problem with that is that every shift that we fill with a special right now is at cost X, just for the special straight, straight time. If that shift is filled, it's gonna be at overtime, because the special is filling in a regular shift.
You go from like, $25 an hour, or $65 an hour?
A- and whether or not we can actually staff it.
Right.
And, and what, I'm sorry?
Whether or not we can actually staff it. Without mandatory holds.
Forced holds.
Forced, yeah.
Be scary.
Maybe we should review that, Sandy, with the police chief's staffing schedule?
Okay. I, I was under the impression we had taken that all into consideration when he submitted his budget.
Yeah, I thi... I think we're... I think he only has one right now that's in the academy, that went to the bridge, so I just think we should review that before time maybe.
We lose a lot, like 11 or something, he said, right?
It's what?
How, how many specials right now?
How many specials do we have, or how many specials that actually work? Uh, how many specials do we have? Cause maybe four or five that are actually on the board.
He loses all of them except for one.
Except for one, right? Cause you are officially...
Right, June 30th, done. Myself, Pat Donley, Davis Havige. And, so that leaves Ted Broderick, and, uh...
S5?
Works this space, yeah. The guy that works at the sheriff's department.
Yep.
Who works for ICE, who really ever works.
Donovan?
No, uh...
Well, anyways, why don't we, why don't we just review that, just in case? Because when he did the budget and the staffing, might've been...
Well, he had brought that to our, to the finance committee's attention. He had brought this whole special and...
Yeah, well, it might be less offices...
Yeah, I believed it was already figured in, but certainly, let's, um, review it, let's...
Any other lines that...
No, I'm dying.
Okay. Sorry to jump all over the place, it's just how...
Your brain work?
It is.
So, on Article five, which I believe they're on now.
Yes.
We did make a, another ton of error.
Okay.
It should be FY 2023 spending on it.
Oh, yeah.
2022, so that's one thing we'll have to correct.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, we do have the advertisements in.
Yeah, we have it, we're almost there.
Okay. Just for clarification, inspector wages is, uh, gas, wire...
Yes.
Plumbing, and sheet metal inspectors, correct?
No sheet metal.
No?
We don't have a sheet metal one.
Should.
We never have.
We're gonna need one.
No, no, mine, yes, we're gonna need one? Really? Well, yeah.
So...
Go right in that little...
So, Pam, we'll probably have to update that list to sheet metal inspector.
Usually, what is that amount usually?
Uh, so, you know, our appointments for gas, electrical, we're gonna need a sheet metal person too.
Oh, the, um...
Yes.
Piece of camo, that's the away. So, that's what we have.
So, like, last year, what did we have on this line for them?
Oh, the same amount.
The same amount, so that did change. And that's not for our building inspector, that's for the inspectors for...
Right.
Gas, plumbing, okay. I think that's very important for the town to know after reading some Facebook posts.
Oh. Yeah, alright, I didn't understand what you're getting at.
Yep.
Yes, that's, uh...
So, it didn't change, we didn't increase it this year, it was $100,000 last year to cover those inspectors.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's what it covers.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I, I would recommend that, yes?
Okay, so that's on the list to recommend?
So, five, recommend? Six.
Yes, to recommend, agree?
Are you, uh, yeah.
Article six.
Article six, uh, yes, for the ward department, yes, so six, recommend.
Seven is all calculated, correct? That's the fire?
Yep, the firefighter, so that's a recommend.
Uh...
Eight, we're rating on the numbers.
Yep.
So, eight will have to hold.
Nine should be calculated shortly, we believe.
So, hold nine for now.
So, hold nine.
Those are the, these are the contracts, just so everybody knows. Ten.
I think that's, you need to calculate that one too.
So, ten, hold.
On ten?
Yeah.
Eleven.
Oh, that's a hold.
Hold up right now.
Ed's working on that?
Twelve.
Yes.
Yes. Thirteen, yes.
Yes.
It's the roads.
Yes.
Fourteen, yes. Fifteen.
Yes.
Yes.
Both fourteen and fifteen, I'm happy.
Yep, yep. Just so everyone knows about, like, the equipment too, as far as the ambulances and cruisers. We were told that they were, what, years out to get if we were going to approve it now, Sandy?
I don't know about the cruisers, I know that...
The ambulance was that way. Like, three years or something?
Yeah, the cruisers, if you don't put in the order now, we're probably not gonna get.
So, the reason that we are doing it now is cause we have to order it, otherwise, we won't have it when we need it, kinda thing? Just because, just like life, everything in life right now, you can't get anything, so...
Every day.
Yeah.
Um, what do we have?
Bulletproof S.
What number?
Sixteen. Is it a yes?
Uh, no. Cause we said we were gonna go for the grant for that.
Uh, I don't believe he got the grant.
They didn't get the grant again, so the chief has asked for, there'll be consideration of the benefits that he...
Okay, so yes, if they didn't get the grant.
Okay. Uh, cameras, yes.
Sound block cameras.
So, we didn't get...
No.
No, hold on.
We did not get the grant for that.
Okay.
For the...
The cameras and the sound blocks.
The grant was, I think, for the body cams.
That's what I thought, right?
Which is also being...
Which is...
Which we did, we did not get.
So, seventeen, yes.
Okay.
Eighteen.
Yes.
Yes.
The eighteen, eighteen, um, is, has been moved to raise on appropriate facility now.
The elementary, the, um...
Yeah.
Elevators?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Nineteen.
Yes.
Same equipment thing again, yes. Twenty?
Nineteen, yes, right?
Yes.
Nineteen, yes, twenty, yes.
Yes.
Twenty-one, yeah, yes. Twenty-two.
Yes.
Yep. Twenty-three.
Yes.
Yep.
That's so true.
Twenty-four.
Yes.
She needs time clock.
So, this whole page suggests?
Yep. Twenty-five.
Yes.
Yep. Twenty-six.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, to the ambulance on twenty-seven.
Twenty-eight, yes. Twenty-nine, it's a honor, yep.
Yes.
So, that whole page was yes. Thirty.
Uh, this is in addition to the ARPA funds.
Um, I believe it may have some overlap if they get the ARPA funds. Um, and again, we're sort of still in a draft position on that, so, um... But they, this is a multi-phase project, so...
Okay, yes.
Yep.
So, thirty-one is the...
Resource officer.
Resource officer at the middle school, yes?
Thirty-two.
So, thirty-two...
Conservating.
Yep, so, this is going to be a total of 1.74 million. And then, we're going, are we separating that out at town meeting to say that...
Yes, the 1.6 will be...
From debt.
From debt. Um, and the 140,000 will be from free cash.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't squats again, this is a...
Yes.
Yep.
And this is stabilization?
Yes.
From Silver Lake?
Whoever says this article needs to make that clear in the beginning.
Well, it's a two-thirds vote.
That's why I'm saying it needs to be clear in the beginning, where the money is coming from, that the money is already meant to be spent.
Silver Lake Regional School Committee, so Paula Hatch and with Swanwood be doing...
Yeah.
The presentation. So, I would, you know, like, tell her.
Matt's coming to the meeting, or at least he's going to put together a PowerPoint for that.
When we do our... Should we be inviting people who are going to speak on these articles when we do our pre-town meeting? Meeting?
So, what we usually do is we give them the motions, um, so that they know where their funding's coming from, and they can see the motions. I've been working on the handouts, like we did for the special town meeting, um, and giving them, at, I finished the special town meeting one. And every department that had an article on that, I sent their articles, so that they could see the motions ahead of time? And check out the narratives that were on there, make sure that they didn't want to change anything before.
Okay.
I'll do that, the same thing.
Yeah, Sandy's doing a good job on that, she sent, oh, I know, I saw the school one today that Christine responded to, and I think that's a great way to just have everyone double-check it, have another set of eyes on it. And then, we put together that printout like we do.
And I'm gonna work on this one, I'm gonna have it all, so that the handouts are ready for the pre-town meeting.
Good.
Okay.
So that we can go.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody presenting has whatever support they need, and you're okay with all the talking you're gonna have to do.
I've been touching base with all of them, um, and Bert, I'll send you a copy.
I'd be great.
But you'll be getting it at pre-town meeting.
So, I, I would hold on thirty-four until next week.
I thought we didn't recommend this.
So, we did not, the capital planning did not.
Yeah.
Um, finance said recommendation at town meeting.
I'm, I'm against.
Matt, do you come and present to the finance committee? You came to the finance committee and presented, and I think they were pretty satisfied with his explanations, um...
First, for just a pure safety thing of being able to communicate with the school as a whole, I'm for this, but I just have a couple of questions before I vote to recommend.
Okay, um, I'm not for it right now, so unless the questions change my mind, I'm not for it, so...
Okay. So, I would just hold on that till next week. Maybe we can ask, uh, Matt to come present on that. Amy?
Is there something wrong with the current intercom that doesn't get to the whole school, or...
I, I think those questions, I think, will...
From what I heard in capital planning, there is nothing wrong with that, they just wanted to update it. But if something's different was said at FinCom...
I, I think we should have Matt come in and present.
Okay.
And ask him the questions.
I think you should ask him, absolutely. Maybe if you, I don't know, if the FinCom meeting, or whatever Matt can, I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was, I know it wasn't this Monday.
No, it was a couple weeks ago.
Two Mondays ago.
Yeah, make it look.
Watched that, I guess he did a good job of presenting, and, or just have him come into our meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so thirty-five.
Thirty-five, we didn't get the grant, so yes.
Yes, I recommend.
Yes.
Yep, thirty-six is yes.
Thirty-seven, we don't have an amount yet.
Well, we'll table the yes, but yes.
So that's, no, that's a, that's.
We may not have it.
That's, that's a hold.
We might not have an amount.
We might not.
But we need to move money into that.
No, we don't, this is, this is a choice, this isn't, this isn't a requirement.
What happened before with, is that not the same thing?
No, this isn't the water.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, not the housing authority, this is something different.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh.
So we're holding thirty-seven.
And we're holding thirty-eight. We're holding thirty-eight for the meeting with Paul. Uh.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Um, this is the whole replacement of the stormwater.
Are we waiting on Paul for that?
Yeah, I think we have.
So thirty-nine we'll hold off on.
Stormwater.
Wow.
Okay, forty.
Forty.
I, I don't know, I'm kinda against this one, I mean, the fire chief's always been involved in that.
It would be very sad if he was.
I guess we can do yes. It's still an appointment, so we can always just appoint them.
So yes.
So you do have it, this one, this is the housing authority, the correct amount.
Right.
So yes.
Did you have, did you?
Yeah, John McHugh, and then got back to me, he's supposed to come in and have a little chat with me to explain why the twenty-two oh five seven.
So we don't know if it's correct.
So I?
So hold?
Hold on.
Alright.
Hold on forty-one.
Yep. Uh, yes to forty-two.
Ah, hold on. Yes, all for that one, especially after this year.
Um. So forty-three.
Who's, who's presenting that?
This is a petition article, and, uh, hold on this because Paul has an update.
No, forty-two, forty-two, I just backed up, I just got a redo.
Oh.
Who's presenting that, because it cannot be you.
Well, apparently it's you then, because it's from the Board of Selectmen.
That's fine, I will, I will present it, because I feel.
You're presenting forty-two?
Yeah, because there's too many mixed feelings on that, and I think that until you actually take one of these seats and realize the amount of subcommittees and negotiations and meetings that we are required to be at.
So you're saying, is you saying I didn't do a good job explaining that last year?
People think that this is a two Tuesday a month committee, and it is not. Not even close. So, that being said, there is a lot of work to do, and I think we could be doing a lot more if there were more people involved. And have a lot more voices, you know, everybody's concerned about different people in this town having agendas and stacking boards, then put more people on them, let's go. Show up, volunteer, get on a board, and do some work. All for it, I'll take all five.
Alright. Forty-three is, again, that's the hold, forty-four, um, so. This requires all three towns to vote for, and.
Hate these ones.
It, this.
Because we always vote now and the other two vote yes.
Well, so, so this is a good thing for Silver Lake.
But it's a bad thing for Halifax.
Well, it, it leaves less control for the town of Halifax, so if they vote a budget that we can't support, and then they put funds into a stabilization, we have no control over that. So this is a second-tier issue, where if we have money in stabilization, we have control at a two-thirds vote.
When will we know that?
Well, we have control of the money in, at town meeting.
No, okay, like when, do you, you wanna wait till town meeting to recommend?
Well, well, I'm trying to explain now, what, what's the benefit to the town and what's the benefit to Silver Lake, so the benefit to Silver Lake is to have the ability to save outside of E and D. But they have to put that in the budget that's approved at town meeting, so people have to be aware of that. So that's the good thing for Silver Lake. The thing for the town of Halifax is we have been screaming, or at least I have, for years.
I haven't heard you.
Unsustainable. Silver Lake is unsustainable for the town of Halifax.
Yes.
And projecting out the change next year is gonna be worse.
Yes.
So if we can't afford the regular budget, how can we afford to put money into a stabilization?
And I see two down calls actually, so there's that, and we could very, very easily get outvoted by the other two towns, they they put an extra two hundred thousand in the budget.
Well, so just like this year, so Plimpton, Plimpton has a hundred thousand dollar decrease. Kingston is an increase, but it's not as much as Halifax, so if Kingston could afford more, and Plimpton could afford more. They could increase the cost to Halifax just by the two-thirds vote, so this is not a good policy for the town. It's a good policy for Silver Lake.
The second part of that is, then the school committee gets to spend their money without it going in front of the town members. So, we have to go in front of town meeting to spend that stabilization, they would not.
Right.
They would get to spend their stabilization.
It's a really good point.
With a school committee vote. So, it's sort of an uneven playing field. Stabilization is a two-thirds vote for a reason, you have to really think half of us.
Finance doesn't recommend it.
Okay, so what's your, yes or no?
No.
Okay, you can put us down as a no on that. Uh, I'm a yes on forty-five.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and forty-six to ballot, um, question one, we are a yes recommending?
Hold on.
I know it's a bad question, it's, what we were told that facility had to be.
It's weird, it, it, it's weird.
Yeah, and.
And it really needs to be explained if, um.
So on the last.
If, if I have to, but someone needs to explain it, maybe just what will.
So, my presentation for tomorrow, the last page is this.
Okay.
So, this will be printed, but I'm gonna try to explain it in the presentation tomorrow night.
Explain that.
So, any cost above property tax has to be debt excluded, so in order to debt exclude, you have to have approval of the ballot. So this allows us to pay the costs for the council on aging by using borrowed money. But we've already borrowed the money.
Right, the, the point is, the money has already been debt excluded, it was debt excluded for the school. Council on Aging Project has to be debt excluded in order to use the money we already have.
This, people are gonna be so confused reading that question.
Well, and, and we pointed that out at the very beginning.
We're gonna try to do a handout, and I told, I'm gonna, I will see it in the parking lot, a hundred and fifty feet away from the the ballot, the, the podium booth, and him people who have questions on it.
Like, we should almost set up a table somewhere over, and like, a wheelhouse.
So, well, you gotta, you gotta be careful that the individuals can do that, but the.
Maybe not us, but I'm saying, somebody needs to have.
The whole thing is, the money has already been debt excluded.
And you're gonna pay taxes.
Project debt excluded.
Right.
So that's all this question.
I just think it's really gonna confuse people.
Yes, yeah, so you're.
We're already paying for this money.
You're, you're gonna pay for this project, you're, you're paying for the money.
Right.
Inflation's going to continue to increase the way it looks, so the value of the dollars that are debt excluded are going to go down. And if you delay doing this project and giving a usable space, it's only gonna cost more money, and the value of the money that we have sitting there to accomplish this project is gonna go down, so you're gonna get hit with a double whammy. Because you're gonna have to come up with more tax money to pay for it.
Right, okay.
In Pembroke, they, you know, they set aside like twenty-something million, they have to borrow another two and a half million now because they've delayed.
The project.
The project, so, tele-meeting is going forward with another two and a half million dollars.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be record to have.
Well, no, 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 we, we believe this project is going to come in at, within the budget that we have. And the reason why we asked for the additional hundred and forty was to ensure that it was a contingency to move forward with that. So this project should hit. So. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Just on the question. So then, you've got the specials. So, yes on Article One?
Yes.
Yes on Article Two?
Yep.
Yes on Article Three? Thank you, Sandy, for updating this. Because that was a lot of work. Article Four, yes?
Yep.
Article Five, yes?
Ugh, yes, I don't want to do that, yes.
Article Six?
Yes, we have to do that, yeah.
Article Seven, yes?
Yep.
Article Eight?
Yes. Article Nine?
Uh, Article Nine is a hold for Paul. Yes?
Yes.
Eleven?
Yes.
Is yes? Twelve is yes?
Yep. Yes.
Thirteen is yes.
Fourteen, yes.
Fifteen is yes.
Oh, is that what I was talking about earlier?
Yep. So this one just changes it to the board sets the fee.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so. Are you moving all our yeses as vote to recommend?
Yes, I move it.
And I will second all our yeses to recommend.
It was forty-six, yes. Where you guys holding?
The ballot question, yes.
The yes, yep.
But you know, typically, there's no recommendation on that, on town meeting floor.
I'll look it better.
So all those in favor of the yeses?
Hi.
Uh, how about our list of holds, like your motion?
We have to motion that?
We're just.
Alright, I move it.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then our no's? I thought you had one no.
Yeah, we have one no.
Yeah, we do.
The Silver Lake.
The Silver Lake.
Yep.
Hold on. Yeah, forty-four. I move it.
I'll second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
So we made the recommendation, so typically what happens with a meeting, we're the moderator and the, um, attorney. Uh, and with the town clerk, Sandy will be there, and we go through and we say who's i- if Sandy hasn't already assigned someone to do the narration. Even if we have the narration, we still need to assign which person's moving it, which, anybody can yell second, but.
Here's my question, and I, um, for our department heads who live out of town.
Yes.
Their articles have to be moved by the select.
Yeah.
So, fire, police, anyone else?
Director.
So what do we do, what do we do during the special? Bert, you went, you said what article it was, one of us said, so moved, and then they came up and.
Well, so here's the thing with the.
Moved as printed.
Moved as printed, yeah, there was a way to get it.
But we're not gonna.
Yeah, you would say, is there a motion for article, whatever, as printed, and then one of us.
In the handout.
In the hand.
In the handout.
Handout in one, um.
So that's what we'll have to go over to Paul with, because I feel like that kinda sped things up a little bit, doing it that way.
I mean, we certainly can do that, and then people can ask questions, they can go.
And if we have the handout with the narrate, narrative. Yeah, narrate, yeah, we're gonna narrate as we go on. So as long as we have that.
I think that's what we should do this time around, too.
This, Bert can say the same thing, one of us will move it.
Bert has a way better voice anyways, so.
Right.
We'd rather listen to you talk.
So.
So Bert, you know, you asked FinCon and Selectmen both tables for recommendations, now you have your recommendations, so.
Yeah, I would probably, when you do that, hit FinCon first every time, or the Board of Selectmen first, whatever you do.
To remember.
Yeah, just.
Yeah.
Because sometimes.
Yeah.
We, we miss that step.
I missed it a couple times, yeah.
Well, we all tried to remind each other.
New guy.
You can't say that anymore, you've had to.
So.
You're not new anymore.
So one thing that I have a concern about is the audio up on stage. So I wanna make sure, whatever layout that Caesar and Scott and Rich put together, that we have a speaker that we can hear.
Yeah.
Because it was really.
He did it, lost it.
Yeah, because we had to, we had to turn that speaker, so we could hear.
Right, it was bad.
Bert, I'm gonna make sure there's a screen, also you, so we can read it.
Okay, anything else we need to discuss, or did we miss anything?
That is the screen, not a camera.
Get them both.
Nope.
Motion to adjourn? I'll make a green and red card, you know?
Yes.
That's the plan.
I thought that was good.
Oh, what about the, uh, the yellow one?
No, we're only doing one room.
No, we just, I talked to, uh, Bob Varley, he is fine with just the one room, we don't have any COVID restrictions.
We don't, we don't need the, uh.
We don't need the all-purpose room, so we don't have to spend the money for the.
Yeah, it's gonna be easier too, for everyone to hear and see.
That's expensive too, isn't it?
That was very expensive.
Six thousand? I was thinking five, yeah, it was in six.
Around there, it's closed tomorrow.